Really weird move to make for them.
While they were losing.
I know how how they justify that expense.
I know exactly what it is. You get some federal dollars for spreading broadband, you're gonna spend it. You know that.
I don't think they have any.
She lit us up already. Okay, and call this meeting to order. Uh, city council meeting Thursday, August seventeenth. Boyd Farren has asked to be excused. Like, welcome everybody here, including everybody on YouTube. We're gonna start off with, uh, Katie's gonna lead us in the pledge, and Josh is going to offer a prayer.
Please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity to come here and gather as a city, as friends and neighbors, and to come to the city council meeting. We're grateful for the wonderful city we live in and the blessings thou has given us. This time, we come together to discuss the items on our agenda tonight. We pray that we do so in a manner that we can work together, we may find solutions, listen to the public, and that we may be able to do what is right for the city. We give thee thanks for all that we have, and this is our prayer in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Josh. And now we have a quorum. Thank you. So, we're gonna have fun to start off with. First of all, we're gonna have a presentation. So, Far West City versus Guns and Hoses softball trophy. So, over the Freedom Festival, at the Freedom Festival for the last couple of years, um, Far West has been able to pretty much annihilate Guns and Hoses. So, you know, that's what's been happening. This year, they came guns and hoses blazing. And they they took care of business and uh, and won it. So, we've got a little plaque on here, and we'd like to present it to the chief and to the sheriff. Congratulate you and your teams. Come on here, maybe somebody will actually. Dave, would you mind?
Can we come down there?
Very good. Okay, ready? Just give them here. One, two, three, three, two, one. You got it.
I'm gonna venture fifty eight.
At least four.
I knew that was coming. So, I'm gonna let you two guys figure out who's gonna hold it, because what I figured is one of you will hold it for like half a year, and we have one holding for the other half.
It's like the Sammy cup.
We're gonna do this this year.
There you go. So you guys get it first. And then you get word. But you will want it back, because you will.
I was gonna say, don't get too used to it.
Don't get too used to it. So, we kinda had this on when we joked, maybe it's not a joke. Then when you were doing your recent hiring, you have one of your criteria that you were asking people. Okay, not only can you, you know, arrest criminals without fires, can you play softball?
We know what's important.
It worked. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for everything you guys do. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All fun.
Okay. Okay. Let me know how it goes. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have anybody who would like to share some public comments? Okay, moving on. Report from planning commission. Yeah, just hand him the mic.
Okay. We met on Thursday, August tenth. We, uh, our business items, our main business items were to set a public hearing for September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three for regarding the senior housing residential zone. And then also, uh, the next item was to recommend to the city council approval or denial of the Far West Station subdivision located at thirteen hundred North and twelve hundred West. It was supposed to have been on the agenda tonight, but due to some scheduling conflicts with Dominion Energy, they've asked to have that, uh, on the agenda on the seventh of September. And, uh, we approved the minutes and reported on assignments and adjourned. That's all we had.
Okay, thank you, Lyle. Thanks. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, potential assignments and direction for the planning commission. So, I know that we, uh, just a reminder, we have a February first deadline for the subdivision process. That's one of you guys' assignments still, right? Then we.
Yeah, Geneva.
For the subdivision process. We talked about that a little bit. Yeah, and then I believe, uh, September seventh, we're having a joint work session at five thirty. That was set up last time as well. So, does the council have any more assignments for this awesome planning commission?
Nothing for me.
We're keeping them busy. They're keeping us out of trouble. So, it's a good, it's a good match. Okay, um, next item, consider approval of minutes dated August third, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, Katie and Dave are motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, C, consider approval of bills dated August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
That was close.
Dave got it.
Okay, we'll go with Josh and Dave for motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're paying our bills. Okay, business items. Consider approval of business license, Black Watch Armory, Matt Worthman. Is Matt Worthman here? He was asked to be here, wasn't he? Okay, um, how's the council feel? I had a question about whether he need, well, actually, a question for Liam real quick. Does someone who's selling firearms out of their house need any other licensing, like from the state or ATF?
Yeah, if they're actually a firearms dealer, then they will need to get a license to take care of that through the state and as well as ATF, depending on what kind of firearms they're using. It's not an issue the city needs to be involved with. That's on them to take care of that personally or suffer the consequences.
We'd probably wanna know that they're legal before we give them a license.
Sure. Yep, that's fair.
I was curious about the transfers, too. Like, I don't know.
Yeah, if he's transferring, if it's just transfers, he has to have a license to do that. I assume from the application, what he's doing is people are selling guns to other people and that kind of thing, and he's the middleman kind of thing. And so, yeah, he needs a license for that, too.
Well, and there is a section on here for state license number, and he doesn't include anything on there for his state license.
So, how do we feel?
I'll make a motion to table the business license for Black Watch Armory.
I'll second.
Okay, Josh and Katie got that second in just in time. To table. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, public hearing to consider approval of a boundary adjustment between Marriott Sladeville and Far West City. Before we, uh, move into a public hearing, just wanted to quickly go over, uh, if you'll bring that up on the, the map. Just a reminder to us that, of what this is. So, we actually went through this once before. It's actually the, uh, old seminary building that's connected to Marriott Sladeville sewer, and then the property, I think it's of the Elums, which is, they're also property owners in Marriott Sladeville. Uh, the reason why this came back to us is because something didn't get to the lieutenant governor in time, so we're going through this process again. So, just wanted to remind all of us what this is.
I think the E, the Elums are in big favor of this, because their parcel is currently split between the cities.
Yes.
Which is why they encourage it.
Yes. So, that's why we're here again. Consider a motion to go into a public hearing?
Make a motion to enter a public hearing to consider approval of a boundary adjustment.
Okay, Josh.
Second.
And Janelle, her motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in a public hearing to consider approval of this. Is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this proposed boundary adjustment?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I think we have at least a raised hand.
I just want to represent the public. Just for clarification, this is exactly the same boundary adjustment we were talking about before.
Yes.
Yep.
It was just something, yeah.
It didn't get finalized, and so it fell through, and now it's back again. So.
So, we're trying to make sure we've crossed all the Ts and dotted all. Come on up and comment. Yes, you do. Well, we want your voice recorded.
Is this for, um, receiving property?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna give.
To them or to us?
Right now, most of the, the owner has property in Marriott Sladeville, and so they're trying to annex the rest of their property into Marriott Sladeville.
So, they just wanna be in one city or the other, and that's the way they chose.
Yes.
And if their property's currently split?
Yes.
Correct. And Marriott Sladeville was willing to pay the bills to do all of this, so.
And get it to the lieutenant governor in time.
Cleans it up. It's just a.
And and the only other one was the, um, used to be the seminary. Now it's a church. It happens to be hooked to their sewer anyway, so it was kind of an, an easy.
Yeah, just a clarification on my part. That's all.
No problem.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks for the question.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, Dave and Josh are motion second on closing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consider approval of the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nine approving the adoption of a new boundary with Marriott Sladeville.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine.
Second. Josh and Dave are motion second on this one. On this one, we will roll call. David?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, D, consider ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash ten amendments to section twelve dash oh four dash two hundred of the Far West Municipal Code, Existing Utilities. So, I believe we understand this one, uh, well, okay, what this is, is this, the existing utilities is, uh, Public Works has asked that we add to, um, current ordinance that whoever's coming in and digging must, um, inspect or cause to be inspected, all the sewer lines, pictures, cameras, whatever they gotta do to ensure that, uh, when they come in and do their stuff, they don't damage anything while they're at it, and that they'll fix it. Whether, because we have a lot of boring and digging and stuff going on, and we would like proof of it. So, that's kind of the gist of the whole thing.
I just have one question.
Sure.
What, so it, I'm, I'm completely in favor of this. What's the repercussions if they don't sub, submit back to us proof that they haven't damaged utilities?
I guess at that point, it would go into probably legal action, right?
Liam, would you like to?
Yeah, or even, I, I mean, I guess, uh, we don't have to give any approvals to their process or their construction work until they give us proof that no utilities have been damaged. If we wanted to go that route.
I don't know of any, like, they don't have to do any, like, punchless stuff with us at the end of any projects in order. I mean, they don't have to have, it's not like they get a certificate of occupancy or anything where we go through.
This is really just protecting us. I mean, and I think for the most part, right now, when they damage stuff and we catch it, we, we, they work with us to get a fix. I think this just gives us a little bit more leverage and coverage. So.
Yeah. Did Public Works say what, what situations have occurred in the past that brought them to something like this?
Some of it has to do with some recent water leaks, you know, and maybe even some sewer leaks where, you know, a pipe was damaged, and it's like, it looks like it was obviously one of these boring things. And some of the, sometimes it doesn't manifest itself for a year or two, you know, until the sidewalk sinks, you don't know that you've damaged the pipe. So, that, that's what kind of drove it, and this will give them a little bit of beef behind that to ensure that they're doing what they need to. And I'm gonna guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, Liam, that if they're in violation or a city code, they're in violation, there's other repercussions to that.
Correct. Yep. You could, I mean, it's a misdemeanor, class B misdemeanor at the very least, if we wanted to pursue that route, so.
So, that, I guess that's kind of an answer to your question.
So, one other comment is just that, um, again, just thinking of this through, that if, you know, if I'm going in to do a work, work in an area, I'm blue staking it, obviously, and if there's no utilities found to be in the area, then this doesn't apply, or is it clear that this doesn't apply? I would hate to be.
Well, the blue stake.
The city has discretion.
Laterals and all that stuff.
Yeah.
That's true. I, I guess I'm just worried that if there's really nothing in that area, how do we determine that? How do we make that more clear for both sides?
So, uh, if there are no utilities in there, the last sentence does say, or other means of proof as determined by the city. If the city wants the proof to be, okay, there's no verified documented utilities in the area, we're good.
Okay.
It gives Nate the discretion or whoever.
We pretty much know where all of our pipes are. We may or may not know where all the wires are.
Yeah.
And then just knowing that we're making this change in code, I see, I'm assuming there'll be needs, needing to be some updates to our application as well to include this, like, language and.
I'm, I'm sure that, uh, yeah, Public Works will be updating their, um, I think they have a dig permit, for instance.
Okay.
Would need to do all that. They asked for it, so they better update their processes and whatnot, I believe. Okay, any further questions, comments, actions?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash ten.
I'll second.
Okay, Katie and Josh are motion and second. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, we made it through all the business items. Now for the fun part, mayor council follow-up. Report on assignments. I'm gonna start with Dave.
So, we had a mosquito meeting this week, and went pretty much as, as expected. They've been busy spending a lot of time and money treating for mosquitoes.
I hear them a lot.
I do, too. I get bit by them a lot, too. Uh, I think the thing that, that was of note or noteworthy, especially for Far West, is that, um, one confirmed, um, mosquito area with, with malaria. We tested positive for it over there, just.
In Far West?
In Far West. It's the only one in Weaver County.
Where are we?
In the district so far, uh, this year, and only a few in the state. So, um, yeah, we made that list, and it's just in the area. I asked specifics, and it's just over there north of the new Walquist area, over in that general area in those fields. And so, I guess the news to the public is be careful. Try to keep them from.
Are they gonna spray extra heavy in that area?
Or they're treating it and monitoring it closely, but so far, they've had one, one positive test over there. But, um, yeah, that, so that was it with that. Um, and it's been kind of slow on the biz development side. I haven't really heard of much new thing, you know, many new things going on or.
Kind of crickets for a minute.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of in between.
Definitely slowing down.
No new warehouses?
Not that I'm worried. So.
Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Josh?
Um, we had actually two different sewer board meetings. We had our regular meeting, and then we followed it up with the public hearing, which we had our truth in taxation and also approved our budget. Um, we had zero public comments come out of that, so it was all approved, um, and things are moving along there. Um, once again, we got a great sewer district that's very efficient, very working as great as they can compared to the other districts in the area. We're a lot more efficient and spend a lot less, which is good. So, that's all I got.
That all you got? They redid my road out in front of my house.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
tore it up and put it down, and everybody's asking, why did we do it? I go, because it's in front of my house. Just kidding.
The mayor gets special treatment.
That's the only special treatment I get. It's a new road. Hey, Katie, what do you got?
Okay, um, okay, a few things. We, um, did the community booth at the Weaver County Fair, and that was fun to get set up and share with everyone and kind of see everybody's vision of their communities and how they did that. So.
Are you gonna share how you?
Oh, we did parks and recreation and outside life.
And where did you get all of that stuff?
It all came out of my garage. The only thing I bought was the astroturf and the, the mulch. So, that's what you get when you have lots of little boys at home. Um, I was able to go to mayor's house for root beer with the mayor, and I would invite everyone to go to the next, to, it comes to the next one. There was a lot of good conversations. Carson here, we got to meet him at the last one and got to meet a neighbor of mine that lives just across the golf course from us and would never met in passing and found out that, you know, we had a lot in common. And, um, so it was a really good neutral ground for meeting your neighbors and for meeting people that you live in the same community with, and so I encourage everyone to get out and go to one of those if you can.
Yeah, I'll be having a couple of those.
Um, parks committee, we, um, wanna let everyone know that fishing club, um, registration opens up past Monday. So, um, taking registrations for that and looking forward to another successful season of fishing club and, um, just working on some back and forth negotiations with Peterson on the, um, ADA ramp over at Smith Family Park. And then, um, I'm going to get started on planning for Veterans Day in November and having, um, a celebr, celebration and recognition at Smith Family Park for Veterans Day.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
I attended planning commission last week. We, um, they had a work session working on the conditional uses for C two and M one. So, that would be nice to come up and hopefully eliminate a lot of duplication, yeah, and confusion for developers and, and people who wanna have businesses here. And then, um, yeah, parks meeting. Katie covered most of it. There's a maybe possible an RFP in the works for the, for the library property, and then we need to start kind of pushing on grants. So, for, for playgrounds and pickleball and equipment at the, at the pump track. So, yeah.
And I got a draft of us tracking spreadsheet going, so I can email that out to you guys for kind of your input, and then we can kind of, we can start utilizing that.
Cool. Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, um, late report coming in. Boyd wants to report. He just sent me a text. So, Boyd's report is, was, uh, uh, we had a fire district board meeting as well as a budget meeting for next year's budget. He spoke with Lou about cert, and we'll be doing an inventory in September. And then he gave me a little hint of something else, which I'm gonna talk about right now, because he says, remember our new hire with the senior center. I have it written right here. Um, so, my report, so, first of all, we have a new senior center director. Her name is Roberta Hudson. Uh, Evan's last day was today, actually, and we thanked him to come out to lunch. And he's gonna be missed. Everybody's gonna miss him, but I think Roberta will do well. So, I will bring her to one of these meetings and introduce her to everybody if you want. So, in the next one, I'll make sure she's at the next one. She started on August seventh, and she's been getting kind of trained over the last couple of weeks. So, a good turnover there. Uh, WACOG, so attended the housing subcommittee meeting. There was two presentations, one from Pleasant View and one from Harrisville, happened to do with moderate income housing strategies. Harrisville, they're still, they're kind of like us. They're still mostly single-family homes on third acres. Uh, their strategies, they're mostly doing mixed use, similar to us. Uh, right now, their biggest mixed-use properties that, um, they're hoping to get going that will satisfy some of their strategies for moderate income housing has to do with the Ben Lomond Golf Course property. And then there's some other properties along eighty-nine where they're doing some of that, where they're, they're smaller. There's, you know, some commercial up front and a few things out back. So, um, some of the challenges that they worry about and that others have hit, and hopefully we can avoid with mixed use is, uh, housing being built and then no commercial. So, remember us hearing about that with, uh, I think it was Syracuse many years ago when we first started ours, and I think we have some safeguards in our code. Pleasant View, they're also still mostly single-family homes. Um, they have an interesting, uh, not a dilemma, but just a fact. They go from everything from million-dollar homes up on the hill to mobile homes and apartments down in the flats. And so, they're working on how to fill in that missing middle. So, they have some strategies. They also have mixed use as one of their strategies as well. So, um, and we're all kind of working towards how we can make that all work. Uh, one conversation we had was about ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and how to get current and future to register. It's a common challenge across all the cities. Everybody's having the same issue. And they actually came up, they're, we're gonna have a discussion about possibly coming up with a countywide campaign to try to educate people as to why it's okay to, you know, fess up that you're renting out your, your basement, you know? Uh, because, you know, there's lots of good reasons why you'd want to, it, because ADUs are actually one of the best ways to have moderate income housing, you know, because that allows people to stay in their homes, because they're renting out part of their home, and also somebody to, you know, rent much cheaper than some of these other things that are being built out there. So, it's actually a good strategy. We just need to be able to count it, and that's a challenge. Um, in the regular WACOG meeting, uh, there was a presentation from the transfer station. They're wanting an agreement, some type of agreement, to ensure that all the cities are using the transfer station and not some other alternative station. I don't know where that would be. Does anybody know of any other transfer stations? So, I don't know why that, but they want some type of agreement and all the cities to buy in on it. There was also a presentation about, um, health from the health department, and they talked about, so within Weaver County, our numbers have actually dropped. We're not as healthy as a county as we were years ago. And, um, there also, it's the Weaver Morgan Health Department. Morgan County's still doing pretty good. They're number two in the state. We've dropped down to somewhere around seventeen. So, we're not the worst, but, you know, we were higher before. And I, they, some of the numbers they shared were, so some of the poorest health in Weaver County, the largest percentage of them are women. And the other factor is there's obesity, smoking, and being inactive. So, not that they're all the same person, but, you know, although those things are, are happening, inactive people, smoking people, obese people, and of course, there's, that's just numbers. You can use your own thoughts on that. Maybe, that maybe there's, you know, are smoking women that just sit there eating. So, code enforcement. We have a new online form, as I mentioned last time, and in my humble opinion, is working the best out of everything we've done so far. We've had the forms, we've had phone calls and all that. The thing that's really worked is, um, because when they fill out the form, it actually gets, um, emailed directly to me, and it has, they have to fill it all out. It doesn't let them submit it without filling it out with what, um, code, you know, they're in violation of. And from that, I can forward it very easily. I forwarded one just the other day to, uh, Lieutenant Horton. Horton over there, and he was able to just run with it. I, was there enough information in there to work with it?
Oh, see, it works.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that one's, that one's fun. I, I like the response on that one, by the way. So, anyway, that, that seems to be working. Uh, here's an interesting thing, so. Just trying to scare you. So, SBM, SBMG, one of our favorite businesses in town. Um, I wonder, if everybody recalls, we, we revoked their business license and their conditional use permit a couple of years ago for non-compliance. Uh, after negotiations between their legal and our legal, we restored their conditional use permit, you know, uh, on, basically on the back half of the property, with the next steps was for them to reapply for two business licenses for the two addresses with the appropriate inspections passed. Well, hallelujah, they finally a, applied for their two business licenses, and that's where we are. So, they still pending in the inspections, and after that, then they'll come back before city council for that business license, for those business licenses again. So.
Mayor, I spoke with their attorney today on the phone.
Yes.
And we'll schedule an inspection. Nate will do it and do what he can. They expect to be out of the premises within 60 days.
Within 60 days?
Yeah. The attorney said that they actually did sign a new lease for a new building in Ogden, so they'll be moving.
They'll be missed.
I'm sure.
Okay, um, that is my report. We have one last motion.
I make a motion. We adjourn. I wanted to get to it before you guys did.
Okay, Katie and Dave, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not even gonna ask if anybody's opposed, because nobody's ever.
Yeah, you're welcome. And that's that.